We weren't even looking, I mean, I was looking but not really looking. We ran a call start.
I think I can do another part.
What teacher are you paying?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we have to do because it's your toll tax. That's what the numbers sit on.
You would think you would need to.
Free advertising.
See, I sit behind a judge, that way if they start going too late, he'll take you.
Take him home, man.
Good, good. Yeah, these prices, I think I'd be right there with them.
Because just, if there was a way to pay for data, I think, you know, that's, I mean, it's not an issue of, you know, like a tax, you know, because people aren't making their bills. But I think that's. What's that?
Big deal.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure things are even just driving myself to, you know.
All right, it's, uh, it's seven o'clock, if anyone wants to get started. I'm David Rice, I'm the director of EMS here in Stockton. Where Truce Mike Hansen is president of ESD in the morning. I have the ranking of mayor of Stockton, John Stell. And Judge, 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 Judge. We're talking tonight about the proposed emergency services district for this area. Okay? Got suppliers that are trying to do, have a lot of information that you won't see here tonight. Purpose of this meeting is, is to talk about this ESD, get the importance of this ESD for this area out there. Hopefully, those that don't know much about what an ESD is, hopefully that you leave here knowing exactly what it is, how important it could be for this community. A lot of the stuff that you're gonna see on the slides tonight is based off of statistics from your local provider to Stockton EMS. Everything from calls, uh, numbers to cost, okay? Thing with an ESD is, is, you know, I'm showing you stuff from Stockton. This ESD wasn't passed, there's nothing here that says anything about that it's gonna be Stockton, uh, service, uh, change of service in this area, because we have to go off the paths, if it wasn't passed. However, we do, you know, hope that it, in the event that it does pass, that we are the provider, but it's just one of those things, you know, with governments, that you have to go off the paths. And we're gonna show you some of those numbers here in a little bit. Historically, usually, the original provider that's there mistakes. So with that. All right, so as I said, what is the emergency services district? I don't know if we give you know what it is, so I decided I was gonna go ahead and give you the definition and stray off the books, okay? Emergency services district, or also referred to as ESD or political subdivisions, okay, such as towns, counties, hospital districts, okay, of the state of Texas, which may support or provide local emergency services, including, uh, emergency medical services, emergency ambulance services, rural fire prevention and control services, and other emergency services throughout the class of the Texas district. Now, this, this particular ESD is being proposed, it's for EMS only, emergency medical services only, okay? The area that is proposed is a rather large area. Now, obviously, the map that you have isn't the greatest thing, okay? Doesn't show all roads, but I hope that you get a, a good idea. As far as this particular area, you go to the county line, and then you come up to the Civil River, and you train the Civil River all the way up, so you can, all the way up to where it gets around, it's kind of a 314 and 1922 area, okay, that's where it comes out of the river and goes along property. Uh, but, uh, in a nutshell, the city of Stockton is proposing this area, there are small portions of the city of Dixon that enters Wilson County, uh, down by the refinery, if you're familiar with that area. They're saying that this comes into Wilson County for about a half a mile, and it's no wider than Highway eighty-seven, they get a hundred yards of haul on each side, and it goes up to where the refinery is. encompasses the refinery, and goes back into Dixon, so it's rather a small area. But it is inside Wilson County, that's the reason why it's included. Other areas, rural areas actually, to include Union Valley, Alamo, Ben-Hauser, Cusco, Pandoar, Solon Springs, county line south, county line north, county line east, and then if you're familiar with the Solon Springs area, it will go about, uh, a mile or two west to Solon Springs to kind of do a three or seven. All of these areas, okay, are serviced by three services, primarily by Stockton, okay? Including Cusco, Cusco is serviced by Stockton. However, the area down by Dixon that I was talking about is serviced by Gonzales County EMS, and there's an area over by Solon Springs that's currently serviced by the Burti EMS. That total area that you see that's within the highlighted area is three hundred and fifty square miles, okay? Three hundred and fifty square miles. Here's the map again, that you have there with you. Like I said, down here by Cusco, the Civil River Creek, follow it all the way up, around 314, comes across the 1922, and then shoots up, but follow this, the highlighted mark on your map, all the way around, and then county lines in. So, some of those stats for this area that I had mentioned, okay? And again, these are based off of Stockton's numbers, okay? Call volume last year was approximately four hundred and fifty calls, okay? As it is with any other service, so like, like it is for any other year, this year call volume increases, okay? We run four fifty last year, we may top five hundred this year, who knows? Call volume out in this area, we have a quality five to ten times we come out from the Cusco area, okay? I don't know if any of you have ever called an ambulance or needed an ambulance, but about five to ten times a month we come out to this area. Nature of other calls, chest pains, cardiac arrest, motor vehicle accidents, diabetic emergency strokes, et cetera. I mean, that's just, it's a name of few, okay? But as you all know, we got this oilfield coming in, into the county, and we got a lot more traffic nowadays than we did last year, here before last. And so with that, more traffic equals more traffic accidents, okay? And you've seen some of the bad accidents that we've had out here on 123, right out here for Black Perskies, down by the county line. Currently, Stockton, okay, provides a basic life support care, has capabilities of providing advanced life support, okay? We have two ambulances that services this area, and we have a total of ten certified personnel, okay? Ten certified personnel that's on the roster, with only about five of them being active, okay? Five being active that covers a schedule that consists of twenty-four, seven, three-sixty-five coverage, and we'll go a little bit more detail here in a minute, but it takes two certified people to cover an, to certify an ambulance by the state of Texas. So, you only have five that's actively covered, uh, those five are covering a lot of shifts. As I mentioned, two certified people must be on that ambulance in order for it to be certified, and they can be any combination of these, anything from an ECA, OREB, to a paramedic, okay, paramedic being the highest. I mean, we're pretty fortunate here in town to have the capabilities or the abilities to have paramedics that run our ambulances. I mean, because it takes someone's schooling, and it costs so much money for an individual to go through that type of training to get that certification, and it's a lot of hours. We have services in this county that, that isn't, or can't provide paramedic care because they don't have it, but, uh, and that's just saying, talking about Wilson County, if people outside of there, I mean, there's, there's services all over the state of Texas that can offer it. What does it take to obtain these certifications? The ECA class, as I mentioned, that's forty hour class, okay? Granted, a couple of years ago, it was a little bit longer, but, um, they, the state has gone through and tweaked some of the program, has been able to, to lower some of that, but not knocking anybody that's an ECA, but the ECA is basically about, well, okay, advanced certification, or advanced first aid certification. EMT basic, two hundred and fifty-six hours, takes three to six months for an individual to complete that class. Next level, intermediate level, two hundred and sixty-eight hours, three to six months again. And then we have that paramedic program that I was talking about, that's generally fifteen hundred hours, depending upon the program you go to, it can range up to two thousand hours, it takes one to two years to complete this program, okay? And that's not fifteen hundred hours altogether, I mean, somebody that's, that wants to get into that has to start from the bottom, so they have to start at the minimum of the basic and work their way up, so we're talking fifteen hundred plus two sixty-eight plus two fifty-six. It takes a lot of hours for an individual to get there. So, once an individual gets there and has any one of those certifications, it's just like anything else, a doctor, a nurse, you know, whatever, there's always education, there's continued education to keep up that certification so that we can keep it, okay? An ECA is required thirty-six hours over four years, EMTV seventy-two hours every four years, intermediate is a hundred and eight hours over four years, paramedic a hundred and forty-four over four years. And again, more additional training. TPR, advanced cardiac life support, basic trauma life support, pre-hospital trauma life support, pediatric advanced life support, and the list goes on, and each of those classes is renewed every two years, and that's mandatory training that each of those certifications has to have. Update on any current health standards, I mean, you don't want somebody working on you that got certified or licensed twenty years ago, I mean, things have changed, I mean, the health industry is, changes every six months, every year, every two years. And so, with that said, every five or six months, every year, our current certified personnel is having to get that update to, to be able to provide the same level of care that everybody else is. I mean, asking the question, yes sir, who pays for these hours? We're gonna, we're gonna get there, uh, but, but, but to go ahead and answer that, uh, because we're not going to call studios here just to mention, uh, what's, is the problem? That's the reason why we're, we're proposing this ESD, okay? Currently, the individual has to pay for it, okay? So, the individual that volunteers his time, okay, to provide for his community, not only has to pay for a certification, but has to pay to keep that certification, okay, because there's not enough revenues that's coming in from billing services or from the money that you receive from the city or county to pay for this. I mean, it's just like anything else, every year, I mean, a soda that we were paying for at, you know, ninety-nine cents a couple of years ago, we're paying a dollar fifty. Same thing goes for the health here, the supplies that we use to treat individuals goes up every year, you know, fuel, ninety-nine cents, you know, what, ten years ago, now that it's four bucks for a gallon of diesel? So, to go a little further, ECA class, three hundred and fifty bucks, most of the time they can't give, can't grant, but again, you know, that, that's the most basic. EMTV, nine hundred dollars, I'm sorry. Intermediate, nine hundred dollars, paramedic, five thousand dollars, that's not true uniforms gross. And each of those classes, I showed you on the previous slide, they range from a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars for each class. But taking a step further, again, someone to get to that paramedic level is not just jumping straight into it, just jumping at the EMTV level and working your way up, so you figure five thousand plus eighteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars for an individual to get there. I mean, uh, sure, they can use it outside of the volunteer world, but a lot, a lot of these guys, I mean, you're looking at some of them right here, they don't work for a given service, okay? They work, for example, he works in the oilfield, doesn't care, he gets off there, he comes here, and he's on ambulance, okay? He doesn't work for another ambulance, but all they're fired from. We have Donna over here that does the same, he doesn't work for another provider. Some items and costs, those items that will be needed soon, okay? Stretchers, for one stretcher, that band that you lay on the back of that ambulance is fifteen thousand dollars. Current stretchers that we have back for our units, about fifteen years old, okay? It's just like anything else in healthcare, eventually you gotta update. And we don't wanna go sticking patients on stretchers that can be a liability, that they fall, that they get injured. So, with that said, you have two ambulances, fifteen thousand dollars each, cardiac partner, thirty thousand dollars each. Ambulance, not saying that Stockton currently needs an ambulance, but when it comes time for an ambulance, ambulances nowadays are running a hundred and ten thousand plus dollars. And something that I've mentioned in some of these previous meetings is, I'm not sure exactly when it was set up, but, you know, Stockton EMS was established back in nineteen seventy-four, before that it was ran out of Myers Funeral Home out of, of a who retired Hearst. Somebody had a first aid cart, uh, basically dispatched, called up, say, hey, so-and-so needs to go to the hospital, can you go pick him up? So, they go pick up the Hearst, go to Goober's house, and pick up the patient, and they drive him to the hospital. I don't know if anybody's had a rape or, 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 or during those times to do that, that's some of the meetings that we've had previously, they work, and they remember those days. But the point I'm trying to make is, is, we've gone from Hearst to ambulance, well, back in the seventies, eighties, I'm not sure, Johnny may go W W F this, uh, a savings account was set up at the city, and there, there's roughly four thousand, forty-eight hundred dollars somewhere around there that goes into a savings account that goes towards the purchase of an ambulance, at least that was the intent of it. How many years would it take to, well, to a hundred and ten thousand dollars? Yeah, that would take a lot of years. One of our ambulances, the newest one's a two thousand eight model, and it's, and it's near around seven thousand miles. Well, when this account was initially established, ambulance is costing forty thousand, you know, wouldn't that make a deal? I mean, sure, with those, we could save up that money a few years and was able to either put down half to buy ambulance, or we were able to save up enough to go, go pick the cash for it. But as, as it is with anything else, the cost goes up. And tablets, this is computers, for those of you that go to doctors or visit the doctors, you know that if you go there and you've signed this paperwork that says, the HIPAA policy, the Privacy Act. Well, that affects us too, it affects hospitals, doctors' offices, it affects all of us. Well, they've mandated that by two thousand and fourteen, all patient charting, not just in the hospital world, the doctor's offices, but also in the back of the ambulance, all those patient chartings is gonna go electronic. Well, the computers and software to do that is running around two thousand dollars each. Well, I've given you a little bit of the, of the forecasted capital expenditures that we're, we're gonna, that we forecast to expend, or spend over the, over the next, you know, five years or so. Now, let's go into the current funding sources, okay? So, how we're gonna pay for that? And, and obviously, there's a lot more expenses that go into running the EMS, rural coverage issue. Funding, the county gives us twenty-five thousand dollars annually, okay? Every January, when you receive a check, from the county for twenty-five thousand dollars. And that just recently increased by five thousand, about four years ago. Uh, we were getting twenty thousand now. The city provides us thirty thousand dollars annually, and that's not all in cash, okay? That's given in services rendered, such as fuel, ambulance payment, station, utilities, you know, they provide us with the station, and they provide us with the utilities within. Donations, on average, about five hundred dollars a year. Grants, around two thousand dollars a year. Those thirty thousand dollar monitors you saw on the previous slide, I had applied for a grant, uh, last year, I believe it was, purchased two of those monitors. The thing about grants is, is either, either A, most grants are matching grants, meaning they'll pay for half of the cost, and you gotta come up with the other half, or they'll pay for a percentage, and you come up with five percent. This particular grant was the one that was, you know, we had come up with five percent. Well, if that present's on the real line for it, you know, what, you know, we, we probably just need. The, the thing with, in this, in this particular world, the thing with grants is basically off of your needs, okay? How bad do you need it versus other services that apply? So, if other services apply for that same grant that I'm applying for, and they need it more than I do, who do you think's gonna get it? They are, and that ended up being the case, we didn't get it. And that's usually our local grants, uh, there's only several grants that EMS is gonna apply for. The state of Texas has another, and that's usually what we use to, to purchase our ambulances on, on top of using the money out of the safety account, however, they only pay for thirty-five thousand dollars to run an ambulance, so where's the other, what, seventy-five, eighty thousand? Billy, as with any other healthcare provider, we do go for our services, uh, and last year we collected a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, okay? You have any questions so far? So, let's put it in perspective, this is a billing slide, okay? And these are actual, true numbers, all right? I got five years up here for, for y'all to see. In two thousand and eleven, we billed two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven?
Seven and eleven.
Is that right?
We had it wrong, Eddie.
Okay, uh, contractual allowances, fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and six pennies. Contractual allowances, let me go ahead and explain that to you, for a lot of you that don't understand, it is a little bit of a complication, a little complicated to, to explain, but I'll, I'll give it, I'll try it here. Medicare, Medicaid sets the rules, okay? They set the rules on, on what the fee schedule is, okay? I mean, if I go and I pick you up and I take you to the hospital, do you have Medicaid or Medicare, all right? And I have different line items that I bill for, such as I have a base rate that I bill, now, I'm just gonna throw it number off, and let's say I, I bill, uh, eight hundred dollars, okay, this lineup, at the base rate. Medicare says, for that base rate, the max that we're gonna pay for that is, is three hundred dollars. You may bill eight hundred dollars, but we're only gonna bill, that's the maximum I'm paying, that's if it's approved, that's the maximum I'm gonna pay, okay? Auction, let's say auction, we charge, let's say, forty-five dollars. Medicare may say, the max that we're gonna pay on that is ten dollars, and so, so forth, you run over this? Just because this is what we bill, doesn't mean that's what they're gonna pay, they have their schedule, okay, as to what they're gonna pay for. And so, what happens is, in these contractual allowances, let's say I submit a deal for a thousand dollars, okay, that's total bill. And so, after Medicare goes through and they review it, all right? And they figure out, this was approved, or this wasn't approved, we didn't think you needed auction, even though you could have a little bit of insurance, chest pain, we don't think you needed auction, so we're not gonna pay for this. We didn't really think you needed to go to the hospital, but they took you anyways, we're only gonna pay a portion of this base rate. So, as effort's all said done, we billed a thousand dollars, but they only paid us three hundred dollars, okay? There lies the problem. So, I billed a thousand, they only paid me three hundred, that means seven hundred dollars, right? That's seven hundred dollars, and those type of patients, Medicare, Medicaid patients, once they pay that three hundred dollars and they show that they have paid it full, that's it, I cannot afford a bill home to that patient, okay? Because the, the buck stops there. So, that's seven hundred dollars that Stockton or E Services, as far as I know, they're out that seven hundred dollars, and so that's what this contractual allowances is. Fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and six pennies, for two thousand and seven, it was contractual allowances, that was the money that Medicare, Medicaid said was beyond the fees given, they're gonna pay, and it came to be forwarded to the patient. Write-offs for that year, eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. So, again, we billed two eighty, four oh seven, twenty-eight, cash received, seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Big difference, right? With fifty-five thousand dollars that year being bad debt, meaning someone else was transported to the hospital that did not have insurance, or they had insurance and they were underinsured, okay? Now, let's go ahead and just skip one ahead to two thousand and eleven now. Total bill, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-two cents, that was total, total dollar bill. If we billed that, I mean, if we collected that, we probably wouldn't be here to have this conversation right now, but we did collect that. Contractual allowances, a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Write-offs for two thousand and eleven, two thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. Cash money received, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars, that's the hundred and twenty-seven thousand that I showed you on the previous slide, rounded it up. So, out of three hundred and fifty-one thousand billed, cash money, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, that's all that was received out, that's what billed. Now, let's talk about this, this last lineup, which tends to be a growing problem here around this area. Bad debt, a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars for patients that didn't have insurance or they were underinsured, okay? They've gotten this billed four times to our loan company, and it has not paid anything. And don't get me wrong, there's probably about a handful of people that submit five dollars here, five dollars there, ten dollars here, but, a handful. Hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, bad debt. I mean, if we collected all that, again, we probably wouldn't be here to have this conversation, but there lies the problem. I have a slide, I'll go, or, I, I, there's a letter that came out in the Ziegun Gazette back, uh, the last week of September, September twenty-eighth, and it talked about the hospital in Ziegun, I don't know if you knew, you're familiar with it or not, but, in January, come January two thousand and thirteen, remember that fee schedule I talked about? That Medicare, Medicaid pays off of, that this is the top dollar that we're gonna pay if it's approved? And right now, they're only paying about twenty to thirty percent. Well, come January, they're gonna drop that number even further, okay? The max they're gonna pay is ten percent, okay? And they very rarely pay the max. Remember what I said about if it's approved, you know, did you, did you really need to go to the hospital, did you really need that? And so, most of the time, we're not a hundred percent approved, okay? So, most of the time, we're getting twenty to thirty percent of Medicare, Medicaid. Well, come January, they're gonna cut it even more, and they're gonna pay a top dollar of twenty percent, and that's if approved, but most of the time, it's gonna be even less than that. So, with that said, the hospital has already started preparing itself for this, okay? They've already started laying off non-clinician people in the hospital in preparation for this offset to allow for this, uh, reduction in Medicare, Medicaid fees, okay? And, and their newspaper statement, it states clearly that this isn't gonna be the only layoffs, there's more layoffs expected over the next few years, next months, uh, in preparation and to deal with this, this problem with Medicare, Medicaid, and we haven't even seen the Obamacare yet, okay? So, as I told you all, there's, obviously, there's a lot more expenses that go into operating ambulance service, okay? I guess just because it's a volunteer service doesn't mean that there's no expenses associated. As I told you all, we bill for our services, and last year, it costs nine thousand dollars to bill off those, uh, those calls. Lot of waste is closed, three fifty contractor expense, seventy-six thousand, education training, eight hundred and fifty dollars, insurance, thirty-eight hundred dollars, that could be vehicle insurance, business insurance, or malpractice insurance, leased equipment, eleven hundred dollars, licenses, eighteen hundred dollars. You know, the funny thing about the licenses is, is, you know, the state requires us to be licensed, okay? But they don't wanna pay, but we gotta pay for our licenses, you know? Eighteen hundred dollars to obtain a license to serve for that ambulance, so that way you can provide care for the community. But we carry, you know, we carry drugs, we carry narcotics, and we were able to treat our patients, we have to have DEA licenses, as well as DPS licenses. Medical equipment, three thousand dollars, most of that goes towards preventative maintenance, you know? There's not a whole lot of money left there, you know, if you added up all the funding sources, and then we add up all of our expenses, there's not really any money left there to purchase any type of new equipment operated with. So, that's reason why it's limited to three thousand dollars. Medical supplies, twenty-two thousand dollars for the year two thousand and eleven. You know what a hundred supply was back in two thousand and ten? It's fifteen thousand dollars, that's what we ended the year with, fifteen thousand dollars for the medical supplies that we had to handle. So, just in a year's time, it went up to seven thousand dollars. Now, granted, more calls equals more supplies you can stay good in, uh, as well as, you know, end of the inflation part. Office expenses, two thousand dollars, electric relations, thirteen hundred, uniforms, eighteen hundred, and the list goes on, this total adds up to a hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars, okay? A hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars was other expenses associated at EMS. So, this is probably my, what, fourth or fifth town hall meeting that we've had, uh, and so out of those meetings, I've gotten asked quite a few questions, okay? And I've taken some of those questions, I've put them on this slide, and, and hopefully this may will answer some of y'all's questions, if not, I'll, I'll take those questions. If not, I'll take those questions. But some of those questions worked. What do I get out of it? How much is that gonna cost? What's wrong with the way it is? Why can't the county or cities just fund these services? Don't you bill for your services? Isn't there a better way by contracting to a private service? What about the hospital district providing these services? And why are we being asked to vote on this again? We just voted this down recently. So, the first question, all right? What do I get out of it? Well, you're gonna get a board, okay? You're gonna get a board of EST commissioners that is made up of people from this area, okay? It could be any one of you, anybody from Stockdale, anybody from within this three hundred and fifty square miles that's on that mountain, that got their foot in. It could be five people, okay? And those five people is appointed by Commissioner's Board, okay? It is not, it is not just any joke to walk the street. Commissioner Wiley is not here tonight, but he's one of the commissioners that, uh, our area covers a lot of his precincts. So he's pretty heavily involved in finding those people to serve in this board. But the one meeting that he showed up to, I asked him to explain to the people that were there that night exactly what type of people he's looking for, or the Commissioner's Board's looking for, to serve in this board. He's looking for, you know, strong business minded people, you know? Someone that has a degree, even better, but strong business minded people, people that's used to doing a lot of budgets. But that board, okay? They serve a purpose. And that purpose is, they're responsible for every citizen within this, this three hundred and fifty square miles, okay? They're responsible for the well-being of every citizen within the three hundred and fifty square miles. They have to make sure, or it's their responsibility, I should say, to make sure that there's an ambulance that shows up at your door when you need it. Now, with that said, I mean, it's easy for people to say, you know, I have needed an ambulance. Yeah, well, I've never thought about it. I don't need an ambulance. Both people don't even think about it. The thing about it is, is, wouldn't you want an ambulance to show up when you need it? Need a dog, I would want one waiting for you to show up in a reasonable amount of time versus thirty to forty-five minutes. Your EST board's responsible for setting those response times, quality of care that would be provided to you, and ensuring there's checks and balances, okay? That board sits down, they assess the area, they see what the area needs, what the people want to see, or what they want. They take all that consideration, they develop a strategic plan, a five-year plan, a ten-year plan. They put all that together. And that's how the tax rate is set, based off that need assessment. So you being the citizens, if you wasn't on board, but you wanted your voice heard, or you had a concern, you could go to that board and tell them, hey, I gotta call, call on Stockdale. They take ten minutes to get it. They take fifteen minutes. Or, hey, what's the possibility of putting an ambulance down here if she's just going to just go in it out for two seconds? They would be the ones that would, that would, that you would take those questions, comments, concerns to. They would be the ones that would put it in motion. Last, uh, the last meeting I had, there was a citizen that was like, well, the money that comes out of this area doesn't just, you know, we pay taxes over here. I mean, is it gonna be seen in the running? I mean, is this money gonna go to the running? Is it gonna go to Pope? Is it gonna go to Forestville, you know? No, the answer to that is, no, absolutely not. The money that is generated within this three hundred and fifty square miles stays within this three hundred and fifty square miles. The money that's generated from here goes strictly for EMS protection for the community. Equipment purchased by this EST board stays within this area. What I mean by that is, is, for example, Stockdale was the provider that was picked to continue providing coverage for this area. And, you know, five years from now, they purchased an ambulance, or they purchased a cardiac. They, the EST would purchase those, most likely, they would purchase those and then lease that out to that service that provided that service. But, you know, if it ever came a time to where Stockdale or whoever was providing that service wasn't gonna provide it anymore because maybe they bid too high or whatever, that, that equipment would stay here, okay? Because it was purchased by the citizens, okay? It stays in this area, and he stressed that a lot. How much is this gonna cost? With that, we ask, well, what's the cost of the life? ESTs consider tax rate of three cents, ten cents per hundred dollars valuation. But it's capped at ten cents, okay? It cannot go any higher than ten cents without a going to legislature, legislature, they won't give anything. But I can ask Mr. Hanson over here, I asked him a couple of that's been the way it was. Is it ever going past ten cents? And the answer to that was, no, it's ten cents it is, never going over ten cents. And realistically speaking, I'm not gonna say all ESTs, but probably most ESTs, you know, they may start high just to get the service up to where it needs to be, or the area up to where it needs to be. But once you get it up to where it needs to be, that tax rate generally goes back down, okay? EST one over the running currently has a tax rate of point oh eight, point oh eight, three, three, it's a great issue. So to give you an example, an average appraised home in Wilson County, or particularly this area, is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, all right? Now, I went with the high side here, okay? To give everybody the, the max that you can see on a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar piece of property, okay? Your estimated tax would be a hundred and twenty-four dollars per year, okay? Max. Or if you figure that out by the month, that's ten dollars and thirty-three cents a month. That's what you would be contributing to EMS protection within this area. Max is ten cents, the cap is ten cents, and he stressed that. And then if your property's ag exempt, you pay even less. I mean, whatever your ag exemption is now, correct me if I get this wrong. Whatever, whatever ag exemptions you have now would go towards that EST as well, correct? So if your property was appraised a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and after your ag exemption, you're paying taxes on, say, twenty thousand, well, as far as this EST goes, that's what you would pay the taxes, that's twenty thousand. One of the other questions is, well, how much is it gonna be? How much is the tax gonna be? Well, we don't know that. And first off, it has to be approved, okay? This has to pass. And remember, once it's passed, the board is aborted, they get together, come up with a strategic plan, five, ten-year plan, figure out what the community needs. Once they figure that out, they're able to go up that tax. That EST board that I was talking about, the other one that's responsible for setting up that tax, okay? The county commissioners, city government, nobody has any influence in that board of commissioners for the EST, okay? They're their own entity. So if county commissioners can say, hey, we want you to spend, we want you to send fifty thousand dollars over here to, into the road bridge, and that money was put there, citizens within this area, it stays there, okay? Once that, once that board is formed, that's it. The county commissioners are out. They're, they're not responsible for providing, uh, protection for this area. And I say that, let me go ahead and step further, take a step further. If you didn't know, county government and city government is not mandated by law to provide ambulance services for citizens within this county, or any county that's in Texas. There is no mandate by, by law that they have to provide these services. However, if an EST is created by law, an EST has to provide the services. So that's the reason why it's important that this EST passes, because then citizens with this area is guaranteed, okay? Because they have the law backing them, there's gonna be an ambulance that shows up at the pool if they need it. So one of the other questions, what's wrong with the way it is? Dependents or volunteers? As I said, we have ten people on the roster, but we're five active people. And it's not because those other five, you know, that they don't want to, to, to cover. But they have dependents, but, so they can't provide as, some of them, maybe they would provide as far as covering, you know, two, three, four, five, six times a week. Increased training requirements, you know, it's not the same as it was. I started back in ninety-eight, started as an EMT. Took me two months, I think, to get mine. Cost me three hundred dollars, not cost nine hundred dollars. Costs associated with training individuals and keep it for certifications currently. Increased cost of medical supplies, equipment, strict mandates set forth by state legislature. And each year, something changes. And it's getting hard with these mandates that are coming down to keep volunteers. You tell me, after I'm having to work a full-time job and I'm volunteering to provide service for the community, and now that you're telling me that I'm gonna have to go and get another additional eight hours of training, or whatever it is, or my debt, sorry now, I'm trying to do this on my own. We've got a couple of people that, that have. Major of peace, please. Four return on medical claims, as I showed you. Then a large population that is either uninsured or underinsured. It's probably hard to believe, there's a lot of people out in this, this three hundred and fifty square miles that does not have insurance. And they're probably one of the ones that fall in on one of the quickest, okay? Or fall multiple times throughout the week of the month. That's probably the best opportunity to go into this, but, well, how come you can't recruit? And what's the problem with recruiting? Well, as I mentioned on the earlier slide, it takes two certified people to certify that ambulance. And so, we can't just go pulling the citizen off the street and say, here, drive this ambulance. But here, get in the back, take care of this patient that's having heart attack. They have to be certified, right? And they gotta go through the train. Well, up until probably, I guess, about five years ago, Stockdale EMS used to, we used to recruit people off the street. We'd send them to school, we'd pay for it. Then, then it started, it started becoming a problem. We started losing money. We started getting burned. We'd send people to school, and we'd pay that six hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars, whatever it was at that time. We'd send them to school, they'd go through that school, get, get certified. Sure, they may volunteer a little bit, you know, they may pick up a shift once a month. But probably over fifty percent of the people that we did that for, after they got certified, oh, well, certified, I'm gonna make money. I'm gonna move, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work in San Francisco for services over there. So they, they moved away, we lose. So now that, that money that we put out to send that individual to school, they're not here anymore. Or we'd send them to school, they'd fail out, or they wouldn't pass the test, the state test that is. So we've just lost that. The county has something about, I think it's eight thousand dollars a year that they contribute towards EMSs in the county sending people to school. The eight thousand dollars hasn't increased any, but the cost of the classes have. So, it used to, it was budgeted X number of dollars for, there's four services in this county. But the only thing the county will reimburse for is up to the EMT needs of, EMT basic. But as you see, nine hundred dollars, okay? It doesn't take a whole lot of those EMT classes to eat that eight thousand dollars up, one. And for two, we're still back to the same problem, send them to school. And if they, they wouldn't finish, they wouldn't pass, or they don't move off. If they don't finish and they don't pass, I have nothing to submit to the county to get reimbursed. The county requires that that individual completes that class, passes that class, obtains a certification, I submit a receipt to get reimbursed. So about five years ago, we stopped that. And start saying, now, we can't afford it. I mean, our claims every year are going down, cost of everything is going up, we just can't afford it. So we can't do that anymore. We can't, we can't put out the money to send people to school. However, we would still like for you to come volunteer for us, okay? This is what you're gonna need to do. You're gonna need to go to class, okay? Take six months, go to class. And I'm gonna need you to pay for this class upfront, it's costing nine hundred dollars, okay? But then, once you're done with this class and you've passed it, you can give me a receipt, okay? And I'll get reimbursed, and we can reimburse you, okay? Well, you got nine hundred dollars from me. Does most people have nine hundred dollars if they just shut up and shut up to go to class? Not everybody has nine hundred dollars to shut up to go to class. Especially to shut up to go to class to volunteer for your people. So there lies the problem with the reason why it's harder to recruit volunteers to. That's only the first example. The second example is, occasionally, I get phone calls from people from outside the county, outside of Stockdale's area. Hey, uh, hear you need help over there. Yeah, we are, I mean, we're, we're like tire strakes, we're down to like five people actually running. Oh, uh, how much you pay? We don't pay anything, we're a volunteer service. Oh, uh, okay, uh, sorry. That's it. Never see, need anything else from them? Never hear anything else from them? So, again, that's the reason why you see staffing problem, volunteer problem. So, next question. Why can't these, the cities and counties, or excuse me, county, fund these services? Well, cities and counties, most, they can ask to do this, okay? However, I mean, it is not possible without raising the taxes. The thing about it is, is, they can't just contribute to, to one service. There are four ambulance services in this county. Whatever they contribute to us, they have to contribute to them. And so with that said, the amount of taxes that the city or the county could raise at one time would not be enough, okay? It would not generate enough revenue to provide these services, as well as provide the rest of the county, the rest of the city, road bridge, sheriff's office. We wouldn't provide enough of funds to support EMS, it's all the other things I was thinking about. What about the hospital district providing these services? Well, I don't know if y'all know this, but I'm sure, back in October of last year, the EST went out in May of last year, and obviously, they'll, they'll buy us one more. Well, the EMS, you know, we were pretty much in the bind at that time as far as staffing was. But we managed, and struggled enough that we were able to at least make it to October. We made it to October, and it's like, okay, this is it, can't make it through. So in October, we closed, okay? We thought we closed for good. Not that anybody wanted to, but there was no choice, we had to. Well, before it came down to that, the city and the county was, they were both approached. We talked about what was on that previous slide, about, you know, funds. But there's other avenues that were looked at, okay? Most of those avenues, they were all roadblocks, okay? But Commissioner Wiley and City Manager of Stockdale makes a game. Both had meetings with Highland Memorial in Forestville, as well as Waltham Regional in Zeguin. And met with them on options. What can, what can you do, okay? Stockdale transports patients over here, as far as in Waltham County. Ten percent of their population that goes to that hospital, and the patient count that goes to that hospital, ten percent of them comes to this, this county, okay? Ten percent of their patient. And so, they were, they were approached, they were asking, well, is there any way that you could help financially? You know, any way? It sounded pretty promising. I mean, it, it sounded very promising. And it sounded so promising, and it was like an actual large sum, they were gonna be able to help out. However, after meeting with their attorneys and having their board meeting, they had a call, they had a phone call that we didn't call. And that was, yes, we want to help you, but we can't. We're in Waltham County, we're a little small. The tax dollars came across many times. They are funded by tax dollars. Those tax dollars have to stay in Waltham County. Okay, well, that wasn't good, so now let's, let's try Forestville. Met with that hospital. Met with their board. How would you feel about taking over emergency medical services for this county, for the Stockdale area? For a little county? Because this isn't just a stockpile call. This, this is across the board, county water call. Right now, it's Medicare, Stockdale. And they wasn't in favor of taking over, they had, they, they, the reasoning that was told was, is we have our own problems, okay? We have our own problems that we have to deal with, and so at this time, we are not interested in doing that. Okay, well, is there any way that you can help out financially? Well, we can help out financially, but I tell you what. We will reimburse you supplies. For every patient you bring to us, we'll swap out supplies one for one. Okay, I mean, all right, then we'll do what we gotta do. But here's the problem. Over seventy-five percent of our patients go to Zeguin. So now then, what am I gonna do for those patients that take to Zeguin? And what am I gonna do for those calls to Zeguin? How am I gonna get reimbursed for that supplies there? So that didn't really work out. Next question. Don't you bill for your services? Answer to that is yes, as I've already said. Approximately ninety-five percent of our operating business comes from revenues generated for the services. Claims are billed out through a third-party billing company that specializes, specializes in, uh, here as well. Factors that contribute to lower revenues, as I've already said, Medicare, Medicaid- Factors that contribute to lower revenues, as I've already said, Medicare, Medicaid, the fee schedule, okay? Twenty to thirty percent, say that's usually what the collection rate is of Medicare/Midcare claims. That's when they're approved. I keep throwing this on from each slide, but you see here, most of the population in this area is uninsured or underinsured. That probably is our number one problem, as far as revenues generated. If everybody had insurance, and the insurance was paid like they should, again, probably we'd have this conversation. They don't, just only gonna be a war. This is a letter I'm talking about, I'm not gonna read it. If anybody wants to see a copy of it, I do have a copy of it, and I believe, it just goes over the positions that were eliminated, and it also states here, being said, seven physicians have been eliminated in the past forty-five days in the hospital. All those jobs represent less than one percent of the workforce at GRMC. There are expected to be more jobs eliminated in months and years ahead. And up here, very beginning, I guess I should've read first, but currently, the workforce at the hospital, seven hundred forty employees, okay? Hours decreasing slightly in response to the economic conditions and the cutbacks and reimbursements for the care of Medicare or Medicaid patients. That was in the Consigging Gazette on Fridays, September twenty-eighth, okay? To give you some examples of what I was talking about, this here is a, what we call an explanation of benefits. This is what I received in the mail, okay? I brought transported a patient that had Medicare/Midcare, insurance, whatever. This is what gets sent back to me, and some of you may even get it yourself, okay? But this tells me everything about that call, as far as each line item, what we charged, what their allowed amount is, and what our check allowance is. So, in this particular case, this here was a superior health plan Medicaid, all right? To give you an example of the contractual amounts I was talking about, this particular call, the base rate was seven hundred and fifty dollars. The dollar amount that they allowed for this base rate was three hundred dollars and sixty-two cents. It's four hundred dollars less, or four hundred and fifty dollars less than what we billed, okay? That's four hundred and fifty dollars are those that contractual allowances that doesn't get passed on to patients, that's what we eat, okay? And so, come all the way on down here, a thousand eighty-seven dollars was the total claim amount. Well, after they went through here, they get picked, okay? What they were, they were paid, because this line item, I don't know what the line item is, where they use coding, okay? But for this one here, five dollars is what we charge. Well, apparently, it wasn't worthy enough for the patient, either they didn't feel they needed it or whatnot, but they decided they weren't gonna pay anything, all right? This line item, we charged fifteen dollars, again, they paid zero. So again, the total claim was a thousand eighty-seven dollars. They noticed a check for four hundred dollars. And to be exact, four hundred, four dollars and eighty-three cents, okay? That's a little over six hundred dollars less than what we billed. And that's six hundred dollars that we eat, meaning, we're not gonna get it, because we can't pass that home to the patient. Nothing that would do any good most of the time, because they're just gonna go into that bad, that bad debt. Payment code ninety-two, okay, for your supplies. And it says right there, paid and full. That's it. Some of these services is not covered, or is not a covered benefit by Texas Medicaid. That's why they're not gonna pay for it. This here is a VA patient, all right? This patient was billed thirteen hundred dollars, I don't know what the call was about, thirteen hundred dollars, it implies something of significance. We received a check for zero dollars. They paid zero dollars. VA constitute payment full. Veteran may not be billed for any services covered by VA disposition. This is a Medicaid and CHIPS patient who billed nine hundred eighty-one dollars, received a check for zero dollars. Reason why is because this one was a known rogue, meaning, either the patient didn't have Medicaid when they said they did, or they were taken to the hospital before their Medicaid went, uh, went, uh, went active, or they were taken to the hospital after the Medicaid expired, whichever, at this time, was a known rogue. So, isn't there a better way, like contracting for a private provider? Well, I really don't know why most people think that, but no. No, that is a known issue. Last year, when Stockdale EMS had to close those doors, the city and the county went out for bids, okay? Went out for bids, the city, "How much does this whole cost, you know? We really need an ambulance here." I don't want to have that on my back whenever, you know, this so-and-so, or Richard so-and-so here goes into cardiac arrest and die because I didn't have any ambulance here for them to take them to the hospital or whatever. And so, they went out for bids, and of course, they received two bids. I submitted a bid for Stockdale, it was roughly two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And Aiken was the only private provider that submitted a bid, and that was for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And I got it in parentheses here, but that was for the city only, okay? City only, city limits, okay? That's how much it was gonna cost to provide a service for the city. For most of you, you read the Wilson County News, but last month, the Emergency Services District Number Two up in the Eagle Creek area, okay? They went out for bids, all right? That area is fifty-six square miles, fifty-six square miles. Ours is three hundred and fifty, right? So there's three, or excuse me, fifty-six miles, square miles. And this is the bids that they had received. Acadian wanted seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to cover that fifty-six square miles. Apollo wanted four hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to cover that. Eagle Creek, being the original volunteer provider, was awarded the contract, and they bid a hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, okay? So, is going private cheaper? Why are we being asked to vote on this again? We just voted this down recently. Well, for several reasons, all right? Due to the very poor turnout, out of a possible six thousand votes, okay? Only five hundred people showed up to vote and made that decision, okay, to vote it down. And granted, it failed by a small margin, twenty-five votes. And, to be honest with you, it passed in the city. It passed in the city by a small margin, but it did pass in the city. However, last year, whenever the EST was set up, it was set up to where it has to pass in all areas if you're looking for it to be formed. This time, it's set up to where wherever it passes, it passes, meaning, if it passes in the county, there's gonna be an EST in the county. And I should've, I should've said, if it passes in the county, it fails in the city, there's gonna be an EST in the county. If it passes in the city and fails in the county, there won't be an EST in the county, it'll be one in the city. So we really, really need this to pass in all areas. It's gonna be a big donut, or a donut, whichever. Numerous citizens requesting it back in the ballot. After a week flows in October, we see people in the streets, or they call the station, or call the phones, they know you. "What's the deal? Why y'all closed?" Staffing calls. "Three months trying to get an EST started." "Well, what's an EST?" "I didn't know it was on the ballot. I didn't know what it would do for this community." So, not too many people knew about the EST, or what an EST was, or what it meant for the community. I mean, it's more than just a tax issue, it's more to hear the citizens, for your well-being. So, as I've already said, some of the benefits. Most importantly, the community will be guaranteed EMS coverage twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Lessened the dependence on volunteers. Ability to focus on training. Ability to purchase needed equipment to begin to comply against life support care. And most importantly, you'd have that board of commissioners that was responsible, who were seen, making sure that an ambulance shows up at your door. Making sure that the tax dollars that is generated for this area goes toward providing that service to this community. A board that is there for checks and balances. A board that's there to make sure that whatever that ambulance provider, whoever that may be, is showing up at your door at that time allotted, you know? Making sure that that service that is providing that service to this area is provided here that they're supposed to be providing. There's ESTs all across the state of Texas. I don't know the exact number, Mike probably does, but most ESTs want the best for the communities. I mean, they won't put that high level care. So the process, this is where we're at. We started this with obtaining a hundred signature for property owners, there are extra voters, okay? We obtained that. Called the petition with county judge. Petition went in front of the county commissioners, and it was approved. We had our public hearing, which we had three people show up to, as far as people speaking, either for or against it. And then now we're in our town hall phase meeting, okay? And it goes out to voters November sixth, early voting being against Stockdale on October twenty-sixth. So, what does it mean if this EST does not pass this time? Well, this is what it means. Likelihood of having an EMS service based, okay, based in Stockdale, based in this area, is gonna be slim to none. Reason being is, is because of the volunteers. We just can't refer, that time, and we were down for those, that twenty days in October. We ran ads in the paper, uh, had ads in the paper, we put together classes, Facebook, a whole number of things, trying to recruit citizens from the community to come out and volunteer, whether they were certified or not. And those that wasn't certified, again, I mentioned that eight thousand dollars that was in the budget with the county to send people to school. We were gonna use that money to send people to school, just to go over and socialize our streets. But out of that, we got zero response, okay? Zero response. However, during that twenty days that we worked those, we were fortunate enough to have four of our ex-people, our ex-members that moved away, for instance, that moved back, or that had left, or took a time of leave because of a family call, or whatever, they came back. So, we all got together, and it was like, hey, there's five of us, four were just came aboard, they wanna reopen, we all wanna do. And so we all chose to reopen and to provide service. But since then, we've lost, you know, those four people that came aboard, not necessarily those four individuals, but we've lost those four, plus a couple others. Nothing against them, but again, they got to provide for the family. Wolfville came in, they paid money, they all up and up to, you know, to go work for and make that money for that. And so I'll say again, this bill, the likelihood of having an ambulance service based in this area is gonna be slim to none. Whenever we were closed during the twenty days, Forestville, the county EMS was covering this area. And they're volunteering too. But think about it. When you volunteer, you don't stay at the station. In the middle of the night, you gotta get up, get dressed, and drive to the station, grab that ambulance, drive to work that call maybe. You're looking at thirty, forty-five minutes for an ambulance, if you need it. I know the first day that we were closed, the very first day, there was an unconscious in Stockdale, and Forestville had a response. I know there was a wreck, several, I think it was a weekend to our closure, there was a wreck about eleven o'clock at night at five thirty-seven, one twenty-three. Took forty-three minutes for an ambulance. So, I don't know if y'all are for it, if you're against it, I just hope that you take all this into consideration. Think about it. We're asking for your support. If you have any questions, we won't have an answer.
So once the people are at that station, if this claim does evolve, what is your estimated response time to this location right here?
Okay.
The EMS ward.
If the EST passes, okay, first off, it's gonna be based off that EST board.
Right.
So, everything I tell you is gonna be my opinion, all right?
Okay.
I mean, because it's gonna be up to that board. And you as a citizen, you can come here and say, "Hey, I want an ambulance here, you shoot those stats they give you," right? So, my opinion of this is, most likely how it will evolve is, is there will be some type of staffing there at the station, okay?
So, somebody's gonna be there at the station?
I would say most likely.
Twenty-four seven, somebody's gonna be there?
The less, the dependence on volunteers, that's my way of lessening the dependence on volunteers, to put staffing.
So we're gonna be paying for this, thinking that somebody's gonna be there twenty-four seven, but...
No, no, I'm telling you, no, no, no.
That'll be up to those five commissioners at our point.
It'll be, it'll be taken into consideration. Like they'll look at the number of calls, it's more than likely, like I said, they may be there twenty-four seven, but they'll be taking into consideration the number of calls and what time they're happening, as far as manning the station or not manning it, because there's economics involved in it too, they can keep tax bills open, but they won't. But in the event they're not there, someone will be on the beep, the beep out, beep the buzzer home, they'll make the call, whatever.
Well, my question right now is, what, I'm just asking for a response time.
Sure.
If you're at that station, how long is it gonna get you and that ambulance to be in this hall right here?
Okay. Let me just speak off of... Other services that are under ESTs or under municipal, it's whatnot, okay? For example, I work for Seguin Fire Department. We have to be out the door two minutes, as day or night.
All right.
Okay? And so something similar to that could have to care. Again, that's probably a hard question to answer right now, because that's gonna be based off of those five people that sit here. And the reason why I say that is, is because it's gonna be based off of how much money can be generated out of this EST. And how fast we can implement it. I mean, staffing, you know, putting staff together, paying people to be there, you know, it's not cheap, you know? So, I mean, it's gonna be based off of how much money can be generated.
But as far as response time, it's an awful lot of money, you're asking all these experts to be paying. And by the way, I appreciate all of y'all's volunteerism and everything, and we got y'all with, it's a great service, we gotta have y'all. But, uh, but as far as the three minutes to get ready, I'm gonna tell you right now, this morning, I went from the fire station in Stockdale to this hall, and one twenty-three was wide open. I drove seventy-five miles an hour. Judge, I'm sorry, I'm speeding. I just wanted to make a point. I mean, I wanna ask you now, what's that, what's the max speed of that ambulance? Is it governed? Governed?
No, it's not.
Okay, so you can go a hundred miles an hour?
I picked it up.
Okay, I'll just have to, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna know, I wanna know how fast we can possibly go in that ambulance, and how much, I mean, how much time we're talking about to get to this hall?
If you were sitting, stayed inside the evening, it was an Ecall, and you were in Stockdale, how long was that? I would say probably ten minutes.
Okay. Yes, that's driving. Once you're sitting in there, being that there's no traffic, okay? And, uh, and of course, you know, as a paramedic, how long can a brain live without oxygen? Four to six minutes? I could die three times in that time.
Well, four to six minutes, brain cells start dying, yes, I'm sure.
Right.
But, I hate where you're going with that.
I mean, grandma's gonna be dead.
No, I'm sure.
I said, we appreciate y'all.
No, I heard, I understand what you're saying. But it's those times whenever, you know, grandma's not dead when that call's made, or grandma's not dead when we get there, she goes somewhere to the hospital, and there's somebody there to take care of, you know? I mean, it happens. I understand what you're saying.
Right.
David, don't most emergency services look at what they call the golden hour? From the time you leave till they start receiving care, more than just a basic care, you're looking at that golden hour.
And your golden hour is basically gonna be up by the time we did the ambulance together.
I understand what you're saying.
Back to that hospital, your golden hour is done.
Right. What you're looking at with the paramedic and the equipment that they have in these ambulances, once they arrive on the scene, they're in communication with that hospital.
Right.
They're analyzing the situation, and most times, you're getting treatment while you're being transported.
And of course, somebody has to do compressions at, you know, a hundred compressions per minute, basically.
Right.
And that paramedic is gonna be, you know, pushing drugs and doing compressions and demolying at the same time?
Did it today.
Okay. You did a hundred compressions per minute?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
I witnessed it, yes, sir.
Okay, how long did that last you?
We did thirty minutes.
Okay. When you were by yourself, doing all this?
It was me and that gentleman right there.
Okay, but you said there might be two?
But, okay.
Just me driving.
We stayed there on scene doing this. We have the ability to stay on scene and treat. We can do everything in back of an ambulance, but they can do it at the ER from this point. Granted, he's starting to talk about surgery. But we have the abilities to ask for assistance. We can tone out for, for a medical accident, we can tone out for fire, for a fire department. And we have that ability. And so they come, and we're screaming, "Hey, I'm here, what do you want me to do?"
Right.
And that's what we do, and that's how we roll. And this isn't our first game.
A lot of times when there is a cardiac or CPR sounding call, most of them that are certified, because I live with this one, and I've got neighbors that are, they go to the station and wait to be called. So they're already there waiting, or needs to get dressed, waiting to go up the door. There's a couple firefighters that are really good at showing up, that that's that kind of, they do that kind of a call, going out.
Usually, depending upon the call that goes out, if it sounds like it's gonna be bad, usually we have all that that we possibly could ask for between the fire department and the EMS to show up for that call.
Having a firefighter on your truck, you are actually getting pretty much the same care a doctor would start giving you. We've got medical scanning orders protocols where the medic is trying to give you your nitron, nitro, aspirin, or fentanyl, those medications we already carry on our trucks. So as a paramedic, we're actually giving the same things the doctor would be ordering to on the nurse, maybe this, we're actually starting that in the back of the truck already.
Uh, can I make a few comments? Doctor, you're the E M T in Austin, is that correct? Or a fireman?
Yeah, I know what relevance that is, but yeah.
So, listening to Dave, you know he's professional.
Right.
In the way he talks.
Yes.
And that's what's available here in this area.
Right.
And that's what's going to be available. When this came around the first time, I didn't get involved in it. I didn't, I said, you know, they'll get out, they'll work it in the past, and it'll be. And we went through a long process of trying to get funding, and it covered it all, I mean, and it was, and then it went out business. I mean, they closed down. Florisville answered it, but they was getting pretty close to saying, we're not going to do it anymore, because we're volunteers also. If all of you live in this area, you've seen the truck traffic that's here now with this Eagle for Shell, this out here, it's 10 times at least what it has been in the past. When I came here in 68 as a DPS trooper, the county was probably a third, no more than a half of what it is right now. And the ambulance that he talked about, Joe Myers, was the E M T. The DPS troopers, with that little knowledge that we had, was out there trying to help with that. And then we watched it progress, progressively, you know? And now, you see what the requirements that the state puts on to have it. And, I guess what I'm trying to say is, the population's gone up, the traffic's gone up, it's all Eagle for Shell, and there's no more volunteers than there was then, or maybe less. The, now, as far as the taxes, here's, there's no guarantee of this, but it appears to be this way. When I took office in 1999, the tax rate in the county was at .4. It's been all the way from .40 to .47 during those years. During those same times, Karnes County, Hattieskey County, Gondolas County, all was .7, .8, almost double of what Wilson County's was during those times. I was at a juvenile board meeting in Karnes County the other day, with all of the activity that they got there, their tax rate this year is going to be .29, because of the production of the oil and everything there. Now, we're not going to have near that amount of production in this county. We're going to have some, and the infrastructure that's coming from that is going to reduce your tax rate, because there's just more tax base, it's going to be more tax base.
What is the tax base in this area?
It's, well, that's another point, it's not near what it is in the other areas of the county.
But, well, but you've got an idea of what?
I really don't, I should have, had it broken down, but I don't, I mean, I'd just be hesitant if I told you, but for instance, for the majority of our.
Number for the E S D?
Well, we have last year's, and it's estimated to bring in, at the max dollar amount, 350, you know, 350,000, or 350 million is what it's totally appraised at. After, if the, or if the tax rate was set at 10 cents, that would bring in 350,000.
I wonder where that would go, $35 million would be the tax base?
No, you have 350 million within the E S.
The 350 square miles that I'm talking about? 350 square miles. There's 350 million dollars is what it's appraised at.
Okay.
35?
35 million.
35.
Anyways, we're bringing in 350,000 dollars, okay, you know, tax of the max dollar. That was also before the oilfields started coming in, before we had some additional businesses come in, as well as a few other things. So it may be even, the base may be more than that.
If you take another Burnia area up there, or across the northern part, all those people that live in 300, 400,000 dollar homes that are not agged now, the majority of our properties down here have agged now. And so, and another thing.
The average, pardon, the average residential taxable value in the county is 124,000 dollars, that's the average. 10,000 dollars in 2 million, I think, with the average. The average in E S D one, which is where judges are referring to, residential population, higher value houses, the average up there is 174,000, nearly 50,000 dollars per residential unit, or average higher. So there's a lot higher income, a lot smaller area, there's a lot less one that has to go, it's diluted out over four miles.
And another thing to keep in mind, when these fellows make the call over here, they're going to be gone for just three hours. They have to go to Siggy, or Florisville, away from the area. And Florisville, they can make the call there, be at the hospital, be at home, just a little while, and the same, you know, I mean, it, so they've got a hardship over here that's not in the rest of the county for, making, being there to cover and whatever. I heard someone earlier say something, why don't we just jump in the car and go to the doctor then? In those 27 years I worked as DPS trooper, and a lot of those accidents, a lot of right up and down 123 out here, those people weren't jumping in their car and going anywhere. They had to have, be cut out sometime by jaws of life, or whatever. So, it's important that the, it's kind of like insurance, if you never need it, it's fine, but if you need it, it's there. And besides that, I know all of you are caring people, and whether it's your family or somebody else, it's, you want to have that service available. Mr. Bosankan, Butch Bosankan, he's told me a number of times whenever these petitions come up, he said, I'm alive today because of this EMS unit in Stockdale. He said, if it hadn't been for them, I wouldn't have been. But, all of you have to just do what you feel is right, but I would appreciate very much any support that you can rally for this, because it's important to all of us, it's a, in reality, it should have been county-wide, but the signatures have to be gotten in order to get it on the ballot. We as a county attorney, if we can't take that bull by the horn and go get the signature, they took the initiative to get the signatures to get it on the ballot here. And again, I just want to add for what you said a while ago, I appreciate every one of you very much for the work that you do, have done, and continue.
So, I think for the, to answer your question, keep the firm responsible.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, realistically speaking, unless you get an ambulance right here, you know, or further this way, make sure.
Right there.
But coming from Stockdale, the only thing that I can suggest that would probably improve that is, yes, if we had staff at the urgent station, if this ESD passes, that's probably something that is most likely going to happen, that we would have staffing at the stations, where they would be out the door within a minute or two.
Right. Well, one other comment I wanted to make, a thing that I want to, you said you asked Commissioner Wiley about what type of people, he always said, very business-minded people? He and I had this discussion the other day, and I said, Larry, I disagree with you to a degree. I said, it's good to have business-minded people on there, but you need to know someone that knows something about response time, calls, medics. I just think, I would make a claim, you're a very good representative of it.
Well, now, see, the thing about this, nobody within the emergency services within this area, nobody's on the EMS, nobody's on fire, and service is poor. So it has to be made up by citizens from within this area that has no interest in it. And so, yeah, I suppose that's a little bit wrong.
Thanks, Mark.
David, I think this is a better question.
Okay, is maybe just a little bit like fire department, well, like, well, like your fire department, on every call, there is an EMS, usually units sent with the call, correct?
Usually, yes. Anytime they go out for a house fire, or some type of big fire, an ambulance usually accompanies the fire department.
These charges, how does one work charges like these, or you don't?
There is a charge there.
I know that, that's a, that's a call, that's the, that's, you know.
But think about it.
Well, that's, there's another thing.
But most of the, most of the guys that's on the ambulance side is also a firefighter or a firefighter, so vice versa. I mean, they scratch our back, we scratch their back. What I mean by that is, is whenever we need assistance with CPR, or we need assistance with lifting, or we need assistance on a wreck, they show up without us even asking. So that's sort of how we pay them, is we go out on this large fire, I mean, and technically, when they go out on a large fire like that, like a house fire, whatever, I mean, they need some type of rehab at that. I mean, and oftentimes, maybe it's for the family member that was involved in the fire itself, or maybe we're there because we'll stand by or to provide rehab for the firefighters.
I figured you shot a $500 donation bet, and that's, um, I guess that's.
But we EMS, we, our donations have never been great. I think back in 98, we were probably a little bit more than that, higher closer to 1,000. It's just that ever since, about the beginning of 2000, it's just started to run down.
In other words, you're in the fire department, or you're two different.
We're two different organizations. We're housed in the same station.
Work together, but still you're two different.
That's.
Do y'all have fundraisers?
You got the $700 tier issue? I mean, you have five people, I mean, can you warm the, you know, come on.
Well, we.
You thought a fundraiser fired? You know, that's what needs to happen.
Well, about five years ago, to answer the question, and yes, I can prove it, Johnny, but, uh, about five years ago, we did have a fundraiser, and we ended up losing about $5,000, just because we had boys right now. I know you've got some more questions.
So you know nothing about the fire, I mean, I guess you might know something, because you probably can operate a fire pump also? Okay, of course. Uh, how, what's your capacity on that fire truck?
First off, this is an EMS-owned E S D though.
Oh, okay, so.
There's another good fire department.
Roll with the fire department.
I mean, if you want me to, I can tell you after that, you want to know it.
Okay, so, all right, so the Stockdale Fire Department's going to remain volunteer, but you guys will be?
We'll have an ambulance.
And they need volunteers as well.
Not saying that they're in the best of shape, but they're not as bad off as the on ambulance side.
Y'all don't worry, Obama care will take care of everything.
Well, you know, that's the thing, we don't know how a volunteer is going to expect. They may make it worse than what it already is.
It could be a lot worse.
Ain't nothing going to be cheaper, I don't care.
Couple more questions? Are you sure? Well, again, we ask for your support. With your support, we ask that you put the word for it.
In other words, this is going to be on the ballot this time.
Yes, sir.
And this is two different, you have to go across, it won't be on the same ballot with the presidential. You have to walk across to the next table or.
Y'all are voting here, right? I guess you're still.
Yeah, I'll pull it over here.
Okay. So what it's going to be is, you're going to have a booth, that's for the general election, the presidential election, okay? So once you vote there, then you're going to come over here, and you're going to vote for E S D.
Go see Mel Bailey.
Yeah, Mel Bailey's going to be the one running that box.
All right.
It'd be the same location.
Same location.
Same location.
Different table.
But be sure.
And really, everybody needs to think.
People don't know it's there.
Y'all have some sign, sign each other.
It needs to be.
I'm working on it.
There's, there'll be one in the voting, different areas of the range.
I can remember.
There was, there was science, when we did ours, when we had ours last three, it's number one, no one actually was saying, oh, here he is.
Yeah, it could have been the same, they didn't change the same.
Real quickly, I know, y'all aren't voting for the Sixco area.
Early voting, they both, early vote on this?
Yeah, October 26th in Stockdale.
But if you, if Florisville, aren't they?